Okay, let me call the meeting to order and ask that we begin in prayer this morning. We're joined today by Pastor Stephen Will Hoyt, and he's with the Assembly of God Word of Life Church. And sir, please lead us in prayer.
If you'd all bow your heads in a word of prayer. Let me thank you for this day. It's the day that you have made. We rejoice, we're glad in it, but our hearts are heavy this morning as the news coming from Boston and the senseless tragedy yesterday is beginning to unfold and has for several hours. We pray for that city, the people of that city, those who have lost life. We pray for their families who are grieving. We pray that you would comfort them as only you can. We pray for those who are suffering traumatic injuries, who are facing surgery and rehab and all those things that you'd be with them. That you would give the people, all the people, that city who are no doubt shaken, you would give them your peace that surpasses understanding, that they would find joy and strength in you where only that can come from. And so we pray for that city today. We pray for our city as well. That you would guide this day, the business at hand, that all the things that are going to be brought up, all the topics and issues to be discussed and weighed, that this council would have your mind, the mind of Christ, that they would do justly, love mercy, and walk homely before you, that they would have the best interest of the citizens of San Angelo in their hearts as they weigh these topics at hand, that you would have your way in this place today. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'm joined today by Brittany Taylor. She's a sixth grader at the Texas Leadership Charter Academy, and she's going to help us with the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
She loves the limelight. Do you see that? She's like, actually, I'll tell you that it's always fun because you know you're interacting with these young folks. And in her case, she led both pledges, so there's some good trait going on there. That's good stuff. Okay, we have a proclamation this morning for the West Texas Genealogy Appreciation Day, and I'm to be joined by Susan Ball. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? Okay. You got all the instructions, you're ready to go. Let's read a proclamation. Whereas, here Brian, I'll take those off. In an atmosphere, whereas, in an atmosphere of intense interest in American history and genealogy that preceded the bicentennial of the American Revolution, a group of like-minded genealogists gathered in June 1972 to form a genealogy society in San Angelo. And whereas, the San Angelo Geneological and Historical Society seeks to raise the standards of genealogical and historical research through educational programs and workshops, publications of genealogical and historical data, and preservation of records. And whereas, the San Angelo Geneological and Historical Society has grown to over 180 members, has published 40 volumes of a journal containing over 8,600 pages of articles contributed by over 250 people, and has published 14 books on local records. And whereas, the San Angelo Geneological and Historical Society has donated tens of thousands of dollars in materials to the genealogy library of the West Texas collection, and continues to assist Concho Valley genealogists and historians in discovering their past. Now therefore, I, Alvin New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim April the 26th, 2013, as West Texas Genealogy Appreciation Day.
Thank you so very much. I want to thank Mayor Alvin New and the city council for this proclamation, for honoring our society. We're very proud of what we've accomplished, and we're anxious to continue in helping people in the Concho Valley preserve Concho Valley history, preserve San Angelo history, and preserve their own personal history. Thank you so very much.
This is public comment. The council takes public comment on all items on in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda, or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. So, let me start this one this morning. The item number seven is related to a lease, and I'd like to, frankly, I'd like to table it. I don't even want to talk about it today because it's overrunning our headlights. We've, for two council meetings, talked about the fact that we have a housing group that would do some work, and then they would get with us, and then we would decide what we're going to do on RVs and RV parks and those kinds of things. And this, this particular lease is related to a possible future RV park. So, seems like to me that talking about the lease is overrunning the headlights of the work being done, so.
May I make a motion to table it?
So, okay.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion and a second to table this, and we'll get to it when it's a more appropriate time to be talking about it, and ask staff not to execute and wait until we can kind of see where we're headed. Okay?
And Mayor, let me just say that I would have been asking the same thing on your headlights comment. Why it's on consent, it's beyond me. You know, we haven't even gone there yet.
Okay.
As far as the ordinance goes, so I'm totally with you on that.
Okay, let me, let me, let's see, I think, I've got a motion and a second. Let me take a vote on item seven and tabling it to be brought back when it's more appropriate and there's more guidelines, okay? So, call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number seven is off the agenda and we'll reconsider at a future time and get it into the discussion area. All right. Is there any other items that you'd like to move from consent to regular?
Can I just make sure that we're clear that that item won't be brought back until corresponding item to the related property will come back, correct?
That's what I'm hoping.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Public comment, I guess.
I'll get to public comment for sure, okay? Is there any other consent agenda item or anything that the council would like to move or anything like that? Okay. And so, at this point then, let me open it up to public comment. Somebody, come on up. Just make your way to the mic and let us know what you're thinking. How are you?
Mary Sager, Bolster, 2376 River Valley Lane. I have a horse barn there. Just my question is, they're doing a lot of work there already. Clearing and, and the fence posts are in the, close to the road with the barbed wire on the road. I'm afraid somebody's going to drive off the road at dark to pull off a reason and hit that, so I'm just, what can we, if they're continuing work, we have nothing to do.
No. It's my read that if they were doing, if they're doing some things on the city-owned property. So, as you know, some of it's privately owned property, some of it's city-owned property. So, the stuff on the city-owned property, it would be inappropriate for them to do anything on that because they don't have a lease, okay? And so, they're operating off of the lease of the person they bought property from. But, but on the property that's private property, from Foster Road going back to the city property, there are certain things they can do with no permit, with no permissions, with no, those kinds of things. I believe that the clearing of the land would fall under that. So, I don't think there's any purview for the city council on the privately owned portion of that land and some of the activities that take place there. Now, on the other hand, there is definite council interest in how do we want to coordinate and where do we want to allow, and all of those kinds of things, and how long do we want to let people stay in, and all the things that would relate to an RV park. And so, we're, what we're saying here now is, let's not talk about this item as it relates to the lease, because why would we provide a lease and send further confusion about the idea that we're saying, sure, go ahead until we know what the decisions are going to be related to the bigger picture and the bigger issue? So, I don't think there's anything to be done to say you can't do things on your own private land.
Okay.
Okay. Others? Okay. Let's move forward then with.
I do have a couple of comments to make.
Oh, thanks, I appreciate you. And, and somebody help me because I'll forget with a consent agenda motion or something when it comes to.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay. Second. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented with the obvious tabling of item number seven. And, and then Mr. Sylvester, your comments.
I just wanted to strongly suggest that, you know, a lot of the times, citizens bring issues to us, and we don't discuss them until the very end of the meeting sometimes when we talk about future agenda items. So, I would suggest that maybe we bring the future agenda items up to this portion of our meeting. That's just an idea, okay? So, they, the folks out there know that we're listening to their concerns, their issues, their problems. But, a couple of them that I do have is, I know that a lot of times, we go out there and repair roads, and we dig trenches, and I see it time and time again in my district on Avenue B in Irving, and Shane is listening out there. I assume we had a contractor go out there and dig a trench, and they, they covered back up, and you've got caliche all over the place. So, my suggestion, their suggestion would be, if we could at least, because there's a lot of rocks, you know, and folks are having a hard enough time traveling on some of our streets anyway, you know, Avenue, any street, Bell Street for example, I hear that one all the time. But, if we could at least come back and do some block top instead of just letting it sit there. I imagine it has to sit there for a certain length of time, I don't know. But anyway, that was one. The other one, I've got, I did get an email from a Ms. Jessica who wants us to revisit, do we or do we not have a noise ordinance? We seem to have these vehicles all over town where their systems just blaring and booming and, you know, windows shattering, or it's not shattering, but just, you know, just vibrating. And so, the noise ordinance, is it, does it have any teeth? Because it seems to have, you know, gone by the west side. And the third thing that I have, and again, these are citizens that bring us, they want to know an update on the medhab. Where are we? What have we done? What part have we funded or have we not funded? So, we could just touch on those three. Those are the kind of comments that are coming to me. So, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Okay. I think, I don't, I don't think we have to move future agenda items to now for you to be able to say, and I'm going to let Ms. Bowling weigh in if I do this wrong.
Sure.
But for you to say, here are some things on my mind, and I intend to ask for them to be put on the future, on a future agenda at the appropriate time today. So, I don't think there'd be anything.
If you want to leave it at the tail end, that's fine.
Yeah, so we'd leave it at the tail end, but you would be able to say, now, I intend to put this on a future agenda at the appropriate time.
And I intend on bringing those up, so.
Okay.
Very well.
Gives you the time to, gives you the time to say it twice.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Let me weigh in on this also.
Sure.
Because I got a complaint yesterday about trucks using jake brakes on 67 coming into the stripes right there on Bell Street. So, that falls in with the noise ordinance. I'm getting complaints about that as well, so when we're looking at it, that needs to be discussed as well.
Okay. So, this is a noise ordinance particularly related to vehicles of one sort or another. Okay. So, for the future agenda item, we'll try to remember to bring that up, okay? Okay. Other items or other, other comments? Okay. All right. At this point then, let me call for the vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let me ask then that we move forward with item number 17 on the regular agenda. This is the discussion and consideration of the possibility of issuing rebates of water fees and any connection or any action related thereto.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Hey, what's the deal here? You, you don't look like a Morgan. You, there's no interim. There's a lot of, lot of problems with this this morning, so. How are you doing there, Mr. Dang?
Good, well observed. Yeah, I was geared up for the presentation, not for this part of the grilling. Good morning, I'm Michael Dang, Assistant City Manager and CFO, filling in for Morgan today who's away at training. We have, as part of our code of ordinances, a requirement to consider the financial condition of the Water Operating Fund twice a year. April is one of those months, November is the other. The objective of the consideration is to determine whether a rebate of previously charged water fees that have been collected is warranted. This was inserted into the code of ordinances a few years back when we implemented a water rate increase in concern that we provide a mechanism for rebating these fees if we were overestimating the need existed. And so, this wording was added to the ordinance at that time. So, according to the ordinance, during the months of April and November of each year, city council shall review the financial condition. Further on down, you'll see, if a rebate is determined to be appropriate, such rebate shall be accomplished in May and December, or as soon thereafter as practical. The amounts and methodology for providing the rebate shall be determined by, by, by city council. The key there is that if council decides that there is an amount that should be rebated, you have the latitude to determine how and how much. Since inception, councils used this action twice. At one point, we granted actual rebates in the form of changing the base fees to zero across all accounts. In, in other words, instead of sending checks out, we simply temporarily changed the water rate, suspended the base fees, and I believe we did that for two months at that time. And then, in another occurrence, we determined that there was excess, and at that point, council was very much concerned about capital spending and infrastructure needs, and they transferred that money into a capital account to be spent on projects to improve the condition of the pipes in the ground. This year so far, or this year as of the end of March, our liquid fund balance is $122,000. Our 75-day goal fund balance is $5.2 million. And so, obviously, with those numbers, staff recommends no action. Now, in the way of further information, our beginning of the year fund balance was considerably higher than that. But, this first six months of the year covers winter, and we just, we don't sell as much water as we would like in winter, and so we have operating losses during this time of the year. And so, those operating losses draw that fund balance down, and from a financial management standpoint, we hope to sell lots of water in the summer to recoup those losses and end up in a net positive position. So, in general, usually in April, absent some anomaly, we will probably not be in a situation where we will be granting, granting rebates in April. The likely timeframe would be in November timeframe when we've gotten through the summer, sold lots of water, and have had a big profit, hopefully.
Okay.
But, staff recommendation at this point is no action.
Okay. Questions for the presenter? Mr. Morrison?
I do have a comment. In the last couple of months, we have found $101,000 in our water department to buy furniture. Just last meeting, we found $15,000 in our water department to install automatic phones, and then we found another $15,000 in our water department to, to bring in software for automated meters so that people would be able to access this instead of just calling the water department. It seems that every time we want some candy and fluff in the water department, there's always money. But yet, every dime in that water department comes from one place, and that is from the meter holders in this city. But yet, every time we discuss this, there's never a cent to give back to the people that pay it. We've got all sorts of money for our, for our toys, but we never have any money to refund back to the people that pay it. We need an investigation in this water department, an external investigation, and we need it now to determine where this money is going so that our citizens will know why there's always money for things we want, but yet never a cent to give back to them.
Okay. Do you have other comments?
I have a quick, how do we come up with, how do we arrive at 75 days and the $5 million? How, how does that work?
Well, the GFOA, the national organization, sets best practices recommendations, and their recommendation is that in funds where you have operating needs, or seasonality, or other concerns, that you set a goal for how much you set aside in a reserve. Some call it a rainy day fund, some call it an operating reserve. The key is, how much excess do you retain so that you can survive or ride out bad, either known bad times, like seasonality. We are in a highly seasonal operation in this case. Or, you have them set aside for some unknown event, a weather event, or some other emergency. They typically express that in number of days of operating expenses. In other words, if you had no income for 90 days, would your fund balance provide you with enough cash so that you could continue to operate until you began generating income again? So, when we talk about a number of days of fund balance, what we're talking about is a number of days we can survive with zero income and still pay the operating expenses for that operation. And so, in this case, for the City of San Angelo, our current, we've passed a resolution, and we've set a goal for certain funds of 75 days. It's not a, it's not a requirement, it doesn't handcuff council. We've just expressed that we have a goal for 75 days. And so, what that means is, our goal is to accumulate a fund balance which would allow us to operate for 75 days with no income. So, that's what the 75 days is about. The way you compute that is take your total budget for the year, divide it by 365, and multiply it times 75. In this case, that equation gives you the result of 5.2 million and change. So, 5.2 million and change is what it takes to operate, approximately what it takes to operate that operating fund, the Water Operating Fund, for 75 days. And the question is, you compare that goal of 5.2 million to what you actually have set aside in liquid reserves, and in this case, it's 122,000. And that's actually troubling that the actual is so low compared to your goal. In this case, at this time of year, that is because we've suffered, as we regularly do, net losses through the first months of the year. And that is because we don't sell as much water as it takes to operate the fund in the winter months. We've just come through six months of winter, fall and winter. We don't sell as much water as we do in the summer. So, we have losses in the winter which we hope to make up with profits in the summer.
And if we make up that profit, I mean, that's just less water we're going to have. But, and, and I assume that 75-day, and I've slipped since the last one, but that, that is set in stone. We don't move that, the number of days around?
No, but we can. That is, it is just a goal at this point. And when I said it does not handcuff council, if we were close, let's say we had 70 days worth, and we were very close, council might decide, hey, we've got some excess, we don't need 75 days, we, you know. Or council might say, 75's not enough. Really, the standard is 90 days. And we've set 75 as an interim goal to try to move us in the right direction and be thinking about having reserves on hand. In other words, this, the top number here, this estimated fund balance, has frequently been negative at this time of year because of the seasonality of sales. And, back when we had that major pipeline burst several years back, we had, we tapped into those reserves to, to execute emergency repairs so that we could get people back up and running on water. So, good questions about fund balance. They're valid questions in this fund and other funds. And I think within a few months, we'll have, be having a discussion about fund balance, and it's important. Fund balance allows you to handle unexpected expenditures or unexpected revenue losses. You know, you can't forecast, it's just like at home, you can't forecast everything that's going to happen, every bill that comes in the mail. And so, having that fund balance is, is good, sound management.
I'm good. Okay. Comment? Yes, sir. Mr. Alexander?
I like to present all the information to the citizens. I don't like partial information being presented and just leaving it, and then people, they don't understand how things are working because only partial was given. We did have billing problems, and, and there were people upset about it, and they were, those did happen, and they're not happening as much anymore, thank goodness. But, we did a couple of things to improve customer service. Number one, we made your water usage accessible to you online, something like 15, $14,000. And that's, I mean, that is improving customer service and improving your access to your bill. And we didn't have to pay that company $14,000, we could have provided our own servers and paid $20,000. The thing is, somebody has to have servers. We decided to allow them to do it, and we paid them for it. That's, that's our choice, and we did it. But, we're freeing up time for customer service people to pay attention to the people in the office instead of taking phone calls, and more people coming in complaining. You now can get your own information. Same thing with the voice system, $35,000. But, you can call and find out about your water bill without ever talking to a customer service agent so that they have more time to deal with the people they're dealing with, and they can provide better customer service. That's what we wanted, better customer service. And so, we made moves that will improve that. So, the other thing is, we're always wanting to give water, somebody, some people on the council want to give water rebates all the time. Some of us are going, no, that's not enough water, not enough, not enough money in our account, we need to be conservative. And that's why, 122,000 is not very much. Had we given a water rebate back in October last year, or November, we'd be in trouble right now. And that's why we're very conservative about that. And so, I just wanted to raise those concerns and those awarenesses out there that there's another side to that story, and we may, I think the council make good decisions, and I think your customer service will improve, which is what we are supposed to do, is help them out, give them the tools so they can do their job in the water department. I think we did.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion, or I'm looking for this item to be considered discussion and for us to move on. Move on. Okay. I think this. Do we need an action? No. No, 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 it's consideration of. Okay, I think we're considering this a discussion item. We appreciate the presentation, and I'm going to move us to item number 18.
Thank you.
This is the discussion and update on current water supply and any action in connection thereto. There's a presentation by the Water Utilities Director, Ricky Dixon. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Council, City Manager, Mayor. I just wanted to take a few minutes this morning, kind of update you on where we're at and what we feel, unfortunately, if we don't get any runoff of where we're going to be here very shortly. As I've been watching our local supplies for water in March, we were at like 19.3 months of available supply. Back on April the 2nd, I checked again, and we're at like 18.6 months. I checked yesterday, just to get some current information for today, and we're at 18.2 months of supply as of yesterday. From April the 2nd to April 15th, we had a reduction in our local supplies of about 560 acre feet, and right now, we're about 1,300 acre feet from going into drought level two. And I just wanted y'all to be aware of that, that it is, it is probably, unless something significant changes on the first meeting in May, we're going to bring that resolution to go into drought level two. I think it's, we may get there before that, but.
Ricky, you said 18. 18. what?
Two, as of yesterday. So, I just wanted y'all to be aware of that and know what's coming. I don't want anybody to be surprised. I like to keep everybody informed on what's going on, so I just wanted to bring that to y'all. If y'all have any question or anything, I'll be glad to try to answer any, but I think next meeting, we're going to be there.
Okay. Questions for him?
Is it, is it inappropriate to ask him what he's doing to extend the water supply? Is he gonna pump the water from the South Pole earlier?
We started that, we got the pump set up and started pumping some yesterday, we still have one pump to get online, so that process has started as of yesterday.
Okay.
Now, the answer to that is no, it's not inappropriate, because it's a current water supply discussion.
Okay, good.
Anything that you want to ask related to, what are you doing for our water supply? And currently, you're right on topic.
Okay, well, I appreciate you doing that, that's gonna save us some water.
Yeah, we don't have, try to hold Nazworthy kind of where it is right now, we're still down a little bit, hoping for some rains and having some, some room for storage. We got less than three feet of water in Twin Buttes in the North Pole that we can pass through the gates to try to hold Nazworthy, so I wanted to get ahead of that curve this year so we didn't wind up where we were last year.
Okay, if we open the gates at Twin Buttes all the way open, what's the flow per day, acre feet per day into Nazworthy? Do you know that?
At the current level, no.
You know any of the flow, I can certainly, I'm trying to see if we can hold Nazworthy. When do we, when do we, it becomes impossible to hold at Nazworthy at about one and a half feet, I think.
Well, some things you know, some things you know, but I'm gonna remind you that, you know, it's gonna have to do with head pressure and things like that, so-
Right, that's why I'm trying to-
He's got three feet over, he's gotta be ahead of the game, trying to get whatever flow he can to save having to take water out of Nazworthy as we did last year. If we had ten feet and more pressure, he'd be moving a lot quicker.
I don't wanna just open and dump and fill Nazworthy up to our normal, that would pull over a foot out of Twin Buttes, just to bring it, Nazworthy up that eight inches, a little over, to get it back at eighteen seventy-one point two where we normally hold it. So, I'm trying to just hold what I got until I get some water moved, and that way I can try for as long as possible to maintain what we have there now.
Question. Other questions or comments?
I've got a quick one.
Mr. Silves?
Are we, whenever we have a major water break, or as in the case, the last time that I called you about that South Chadburn-
Yes, sir.
Are we able to measure how much water we lost?
Not really, it would, we don't have any meters or anything like that, there's no, I mean, there's a guesstimation, I guess, you might-
By what I understood, that thing ran all day, and I just wondered how many-
Well, it was off and on, you know, pumping out the hole and trying to keep the hole, keeping blues in the street. There was a valve that didn't hold, we had issues with that, we worked it and worked it, we finally broke it completely and had to cut it out, we did that two o'clock in the morning-
But there's no way to measure that?
No, not really.
Yeah. Also, well said, there are other considerations. In other words, if you wash out everything under the street, then the, then the-
The street.
Issue has become bigger-
Right.
Than fixing the water main. Okay, one, one other thing, and this is here nor there, except for I certainly have lived through this, it doesn't take much of a leak to look like a hell of a lot of water, and a, and a hell, you know, and a hell of a lot of water looks like a lake.
Yes.
I mean, but I'm, you know, I think a long time ago, we were talking about pouring a gallon of water on the ground and watching to see how far it goes when we were-
Two gallons, seventy-five feet, no problem.
But a gallon of water looks like-
Right.
A lot more, anyway, so I just say, you know, please-
We're watching it as best we can.
You know, when these folks are out there trying to fix the system, please understand, some water looks like a lot of water.
Yes, sir.
So, okay, I'm gonna move us on then to item number nineteen. This is a discussion of late fees associated with delinquent, delinquent water utility statements, and, sir, you're back on, get you, get you some more talking points. I guess you'll be going till about two-thirty?
I think two will be all right. Okay, I'll just, I'll just start, I don't know where we're gonna wind up, but there is a twenty-five dollar late fee on utility account for, for those that are late, it's established by council. Minutes I can find, back in two thousand nine, when this was implemented, back then, we sent out late notices, and there's some other things that they did away with, and just made it twenty-eight days after the billing date, the account is due, and non-payment after that results in a twenty-five dollar late fee. If the water's cut off, there's also a reconnect fee of thirty dollars. In your council memo, I put some approximate revenue levels that that generates, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, it was almost a million and a half dollars, and so forth through this year, we're at about seven hundred and eleven thousand. The reconnect fees in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve was a little over seventy-five thousand, and we're nearly at twenty thousand right now. So, that's about all the information I have.
Okay, questions for the gentleman?
I got a question.
Mr. Hurstfeld?
What's, generally, what is the timeframe, and this may be a guess, as far as when, you know, from, you've got from twenty-eight days from the billing date, that's the date that it's, okay, I'm recorded, here's the reading on that date, we'll move on, from the time that I get the bill? Seven days, eight days? I mean, how, the real question is, how quick does the bill go out after the billing date? Is it within three to five days?
I think it's within a couple of days of, of when it's generated.
So maybe three to four days, it's, it's definitely in the-
You should have in hand.
Okay. All right. So that still leaves, you take out the, that still leaves a pretty significant amount of time-
Right.
-to hold the bill and get it paid.
Right.
Okay, I have Mr. Silves, and then I think I have Mr. Alexander, and then Mr. Morrison.
I want clarification, because I've heard two, two stories. If my, for example, if my bill is due on the fifteenth-
Okay.
And I go to pay it on the fifteenth at three oh one, am I assessed a late charge?
We, we prefer to have all of the money in by three o'clock that day, because we have to make deposits, and that money is picked up every day and gotten out of the office and made the deposits every day. At three oh one, I'm not gonna hold you to a twenty-five dollar late fee.
Okay, do I have twenty-eight days from the fifteenth, or am I late the very next day or the very next minute after three? I mean, that, that late charge doesn't apply right away, does it not?
After the twenty-eight days from the billing date.
After the, okay, but not one day or one minute after three?
No.
Because I'm hearing both sides, I'm, I hear, well, at, you know-
I had a lady call me, and it gets back to the discussion earlier that Paul was talking about, she was trying to pay with a credit card, and because she couldn't get through, she wound up, after the three o'clock deal, she called me and said, hey, I'm trying to pay, I can't get through on the line. I said, okay, we can work those issues out, there's not things that we can't resolve on deals like this. I'm not gonna, okay, well, it was three fifteen, you go, owe me twenty-five dollars, not gonna do that.
But we have a twenty-eight day window after that, after the due date, and I've been told the opposite.
Not after the due date?
After the billing date.
The billing date?
You have twenty-eight days to pay the bill.
What is it-
Not twenty-eight days-
So what, Mr.?
After the due date, it's due twenty-eight days after the billing date.
So walking back through-
Define the billing date.
Mr. Hurstfeld-
The final billing date.
Walk him back through-
I don't have a copy of the bill here with me, it'll have a date on it.
Give me an example of what my billing date would be versus my due date, well, how many number of days is, is in between?
Mr. Dixon, I don't think it matters, I think generally, if you can go through and say, if your billing date were the twentieth, the bill should be in your hand by the twenty-third or twenty-fourth.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Silves?
Then you have twenty-four days from that.
So you'd have around twenty, three more weeks, or three weeks and a little bit-
For your due date.
Before your due date. So you've got about, typically, you're gonna have three weeks or just more than three weeks to pay your water bill, is what he's saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and the reason I even brought this up the last time, and I guess it's here again, is because we had looked, Michael, at different options, a, a base fee plus a percentage, and did we ever go there, did we ever play around with, discuss, you know, kick around, any ideas on that? That's the reason, and I don't see it on here, I just see what's happened, what's coming in, but we had, we had talked about different options.
Those, those options still exist.
But they're not yet, we're not talking about them, and they're not here.
Well, that's not what, my understanding of this agenda item wants to talk about, what is being done at this point.
Right, it's just a, all I had information for it was the discussion items of late fees, so-
Yeah, I had asked, because we talked about options the last time, that's why I even asked for it to be brought up to the table to talk about.
Where we left last time was, council wanted to know what kind of balance generates the late fee. In other words, is the late fee functionally ten percent, or fifty percent, or a hundred percent of what balance is due? In our system, if there is a balance due on that twenty-ninth day of thirty dollars or more, a late fee is accrued, of over thirty dollars, a late fee is accrued. So, there is not a transaction which stimulates the late fee, it is simply the existence of a balance, whether or not any payment was made. There's not a way to pull that data, in other words, we don't store daily, daily balances for all accounts in a file somewhere where we can go mine that data and say that for all accounts assessed a late fee, this was the balance which existed when that late fee was generated. And so, there's not an easy way for us to do that en masse, or across all accounts. We can do it on an individual basis, and we could do it across all accounts by manually looking up the transaction date for a late fee, and then going into that account and looking at what the balance was on the date the late fee was generated.
No, no.
So, the question that council had when we left was, what balance generated this twenty-five dollar late fee? On a, across the board basis, we can't tell you what that is, because there's not, there's not an easy way to do that, we can't just pull the data, we'd have to manually go pull each account.
Okay, from my perspective, I'm, I don't, I don't want us to make it some kind of fraction, this kind of base fee and this much percent, or any of those kinds of things. If I write a check and it's a, an overdraft, if I write a check for seven dollars at an establishment, or I write a check for three hundred and twelve dollars, my, my assessment for writing that overdraft check from that business is gonna be the same, and from my bank is gonna be the same. So, from my perspective, I don't think we should be doing that. I think the only thing that could come into play is, is twenty-five dollars the right amount. And, and part of that is to try to get people to pay their bill. In other words, it's, you know, it's to say, you've got, you've got a bill, you have three weeks to get it paid, we need you to pay it so we can afford to keep paying, to upgrade and repair and, and so forth. So from my perspective, I'd rather be talking about, is that the right amount, but not complicating the process. I see it very similarly personally to, you know, if you write a hot check, you, you, you pay fees, and if you don't pay your water bill, you pay fees. And, and so I think the discussion should be about, what is the credible and correct amount to get the behavior we want, more than trying to complicate it with how we do it or those kinds of things. So that, that would be my input to your question.
And I guess, as long as we're talking about it, you know, because some folks had asked for it to be talked about, and I think, Michael, two weeks ago, you reminded me, hey, do we wanna bring this back up again? And I, I did throw in the word, yeah, we talked about options, but I, I see what you're coming from. The last thing we want to do is complicate the process, but if we're, and of, I don't, I don't guess I, I pay my bills, but on time, you know, I don't even think twice, but if we've got three weeks or two weeks or something breathing room in between, then I'm okay with. I understand those folks that are on low income or social security or whatever, and I feel for them, but if you're telling me that there's twenty-eight days or however many days from the billing date, then I'm okay with it. You know, I think there's plenty of time for folks to pay. Again, there's those folks out there that struggle, and I feel for them, but I guess that's good enough room for them to come in and pay.
And again, even those that have, are paying, you mentioned as far as low income and so forth, a lot of times, those bills are gonna be a lot less, you know, so if you're at twenty-nine dollars, it won't trigger a late charge anyway until, let's say, the following month, if you still have accumulated a balance and so forth, then you start worrying about the, the late fee there. So again, when Michael mentioned a while ago, once you hit the thirty dollar threshold or above, that's when the late fees do kick in. So there is a, an allowance there for those individuals that are probably low income, that aren't paying as much on the water bill, and they're not gonna have that late fee assessed right away.
Ricky, do we see bills that low, under thirty? I mean, are they even drinking water, under thirty?
I really can't answer that, Johnny.
You know, that's a good question, is it the total bill, or is it the balance? And the answer is, it's the balance. So whether your bill was under thirty or not, if you pay an amount which leaves you owing less than thirty, then you won't have the late fee. So, good question.
So a forty-five dollar bill, I can't afford forty-five dollars, but I can afford sixteen dollars, and so now, no late fee.
That's right.
Because I got it to twenty-nine, that's what you're saying.
And, and actually, the water, customer service folks have been good about trying to work things out with customers.
Okay. Mr. Alexander?
You know, we're missing Charlotte Farmer today, and she's got a really good memory, and she usually jumps in and straightens up everything, so I'll just play Charlotte Farmer here. We did discuss this, and I know that when y'all showed the numbers last time, I was able to come up with this same figure, pretty close, that there, there's fifty-nine, almost sixty thousand late fees assessed last year, which is one point seven late fees per customer, at thirty-five thousand customers. And so, and I was kind of amazed that that, that number was there, that's a lot of late fees. Almost, it's about sixteen percent of us have a late fee every month, and that's a lot. So, what we were trying to do, what Mr. Silves was trying to do, is find a way, and we went into these numbers, where the people who owe a lot of money pay, because that's where we need our money. And so if they owe a lot of money and they don't pay us, we have these little bitty balances of one hundred and twenty-some odd thousand dollars in our bank account, that's not, we need that money, you see? So we're trying to think of a way to get them to pay, and we were looking at a percentage basis, he said base plus percentage, you know, this time, but I'm not sure if that's what we said last time. What I was looking for last time is a number that got us back to one point five million dollars, what percentage would we have to charge on our late fee to get there? And I was shooting in the dark, trying to figure out what it would be, and needing that information back here today. So if you came back here today and said, if we charge six percent late fee, so you owe a thousand dollars, you owe sixty percent of a, six percent of a thousand dollars, that's a sixty dollar late fee, correct? Okay, that's gonna get you moving, whereas a twenty-five dollar late fee, eh, you know, maybe not so much, it probably needs to be more than six percent.
Yeah, so a straight fee, not, not grad, again, shouldn't be too complicated. I'm, I'm listening, trying to make sure that whatever gets talked about is fairly straightforward-
Yeah.
-for somebody to understand and for somebody to implement. So, but six, a, a flat percent would, should be pretty easy to implement, should be pretty easy for the consumer to understand.
Yeah, it may be around ten percent, now I'm starting to think about this, you know, you owe a hundred dollars, ten percent is ten dollars, that's not, maybe not enough to get you pay. Maybe there's a base fee, no, no less than twenty, no, less than fifteen, but it's gonna be whichever one's greater.
Well, again-
Something that get more complicated, but-
Well, but again, fifty bucks at ten percent is a five dollar late fee.
Right.
Okay, so I mean, you're grad, you know, just, and so again, it does take all those things into account, lower income person-
Exactly.
-and so forth, but so-
But we are shooting in the dark up here with a percentage, we don't know, we don't have a clue what percentage to charge, and so that's what I wanted to come back to the council.
Now, here's what I would ask you guys to do, though, if you're, you know, if you're seriously interested in this, and if Mr. Silves is seriously interested in this, take it, take it off the council and inform two people, not a, not a quorum, go, go do some work and, and see what you come up with as some ideas, then come back to council with something that-
Mr. Silves is interested.
But you see what I'm saying, instead of, instead of us, instead of us doing that kind of committee work here, why don't you guys think through, you know, how do we-
Bring it back to you guys?
Okay, so that makes more sense to me, and, and then maybe you'll also get what you want-
And Mr. Silves will be on the council next month, so, I mean, for sure, so.
Anyway, I just suggest that.
Maybe.
Anything else, Mr. Alexander? Mr. Morrison?
I have fought this twenty-five dollar penalty, this late fee, three times that I can think of since I've been on council. This twenty-five dollar late fee is very, very punitive. I pay a minimum water fee for our church each month, and it's thirty-nine dollars. A twenty-five dollar late fee on a thirty-nine dollar bill is about a seventy percent penalty. That is usury, that is forbidden by every, by every law anywhere, that is a very punitive, that is a very damaging amount. We need to put a percentage on this thing, a ten percent would be fine. If an individual owes a two hundred dollar bill, and it, it cost him twenty-five dollars, that's no big deal. If a man owes a thirty-five dollar bill and we hit him with a twenty-five dollar penalty, we've almost doubled his bill, that's wrong, that is very wrong. So we need to go to a percentage, ten percent would be fine for me, let people know that there is a charge if they're late, but there's no reason trying to destroy someone that is already behind in their bills, if they owe forty, now they owe sixty-five, and that's, we're not doing anyone any good, we're not doing our city. doing our city, and we're certainly not doing our citizens, that the water department belongs to. This $25 fee is punitive, it is wrong, and it needs to go to a percentage.
Okay. Mr. Herschel?
I guess, I don't look at this as a punitive thing. I look at this as simply an incentive to try to encourage people to pay the bills. When I look at the timeframe, that when I looked at some of the bills that I've got, Atmos Energy, Reliant Energy, that's my electorate, when you look at, you know, telephone, whatever that may be, the timeframe that the city allows between, that's why I was asking this, and I've looked at mine particularly, when you look at that, from the time that I actually received the bill to when it's due, is, I've found, almost double, particularly double, what Atmos Energy is. I don't know who else has gas out there, but Atmos Energy gives you about two days to pay your bill. That's what I've seen. So, and I'm not complaining to Atmos, that's just, I'm just telling you, that's what I've noticed on that. So, I think what the city has, the timeframe that we're allowing people, is fair and reasonable. It's, you know, we've got to collect the bills, we've got to get paid so we can perform the services that we have out there, so...
Okay. Other comments?
One more comment question.
Yes. Looking at the fund balance at $5 million, if we went to a 10%, I mean, what would some of these numbers look like on the late fees generated? If we had a 10% on...
There's your committee work. I mean, there's your committee work. I mean, that's what you need.
And I guess my question is, would we be hurting ourselves as far as us having a reserve, a backup, you know, the...
Well, again, see, there's your committee work. You guys can do that. You can say, what if it was 10? What if it was 15? What if it was 8? What if, I mean, you can do that, and they can do the work for you, and that's...
We're going to need you at the table, so, Mr. Financial Officer.
Be glad to be part of that.
Okay, I'm good with that. 10% sounds good. I mean, that's just a starting point.
I like the idea of studying it in a subcommittee. I like that.
Okay. The only thing, there is one thing that was said that I, you know, I always think we have to clarify things that I don't. Obviously, it's not illegal, and it's not usurious, or we wouldn't be doing it. And as I said earlier, if I write a $7 check and it's overdraft, I'm going to get hit with 25 or 30 bucks from the person I wrote it to, and I'm going to get hit again from my bank. And so, that would be a huge percentage, and that's not usurious or illegal. So, now, whether it's a good or bad idea or bad policy is a different thing, but it's certainly not illegal. Let's move on to public comment.
I don't even know what usurious means.
Yes, my name is Jim Turner. One of the things that I haven't heard here is, we need to take and look at if there are some policies that the city has in place that are actually increasing the number of late fees that are charged. Flexibility in adjusting the date of billing and so on, are those actually impacting the late fees? Because the bill is arriving right after somebody on a monthly paycheck with a fixed fee and so on can pay it. The other thing is, what is the actual cost of processing a late fee and a reconnect charge? And are we, is the late fee not only getting to people's attention, but is it actually paying for the work that must be done in order to take and reconnect the water and process the late fee and so on? Because there are expenses there, and if we, it's not a thing where late fees are free on the processing side either. There are things that have to happen there. What is the expense involved with reconnect fees and late fees? That needs to be part of the equation also, because that will affect how it impacts the fund balance. On the one hand, yeah, we're making money off late fees, but on the other hand, we have expenses involved with late fees and reconnect fees and sending crews out or whatever it is that we have to do. And that part, I don't see as part of this presentation, and for complete decision-making needs to be. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. On a subcommittee basis, I hope you heard that. Other public input? Come on up.
I'm new at this. My name's Jamie Lee Tabor, and I'm a resident here in town. But, I mean, I live in an apartment complex, so it's almost paid. But I know some people who've been through some situations, who have houses, and, you know, Dwayne Morrison's been in one, and investigation going and everything, and everybody seems to ignore that. I know you want a committee, you know, and that's a good idea, too, get some people so all of you don't have to mess with that, you know, and everything. But I do know a lady who rides on Contra Valley Transit. I can't state her name right now, but she works for council governments, Contra Valley Council of Governments. And her little bitty house that she has, it's over in the 76903 zip code, but this is what happened to her, you know? Everything was going along fine and her living and everything, and her son had to move out of his house in Grape Creek and come move into her house. During that process, San Angelo, Texas, cut off her water, cut off her electricity, cut off her phone, because somebody let somebody else know, and even the postal service, that she was moving out. She was not moving out, she had no intention of ever moving out, but nobody contacted this lady, you know, about this situation. Nobody consulted with her. One iota, she tried so many times to get in touch with the postal service to see why her mail has been cut off, and she never could until I gave her the guy's phone number and who to call, because I've dealt with that kind of crap. Can you say crap? I've dealt with that kind of crap, and I know how hard it is to get through to talk to anybody. And, you know, and then they charged her the reconnect fee, they charged her other stuff, and they had no right to cut it off in the first place. Her son had to move in with her to help her make ends meet, and things like that go on. And she's like me, I'm low income, and I know you want all the online stuff all the time, but I don't have a computer at home, mister. I can't afford it. If I want to use a computer, I have to go up to Tom Green County Library to do that. I mean, I'm thinking about moving out of the apartment that I'm in and try and get in a duplex again because of all the crap that goes on where I live, you know? And there's things like that happening all over for low-income people, people working for Contra Valley Council of Governments, you know, and they don't have a computer at home.
I want the customer service to be able to help you. They're overloaded, now they're freed up, they can help you. They'll give you better customer service. That, it helps everybody.
There's only a couple of things I want you to clarify, okay?
Okay.
I mean, obviously, the city can't turn off a phone, and obviously, the city can't turn off cable television, or obviously, the city can't turn off electricity. So, what did you mean when you said San Angelo? In other words, the city is in control of water, but not several of those other things you said.
But that happened to this lady...
Right.
Who worked at, you know, she works at Contra Valley Council of Governments for senior citizens. This happened to her.
I know it did. I just, I'm just trying to make sure that you're clear, the city doesn't say, or Mr. Dixon in the water department doesn't turn off the electricity. So, I mean, something happened. It sounds like the gentleman, pure conjecture, it sounds like the gentleman in Grape Creek put her address on his move out or something. I mean, something happened that caused the ball to start rolling. I don't know what that was. But, I mean, I understand your concern and understand that that was, you know, a terrible circumstance, but I don't want you to think the city turned off her electricity. That's where I'm, what I'm really trying to get to.
I understand that, you know? I understand that. But I just, I don't have, you know, my own personal story, because I live in an apartment complex with all bills paid.
So, you're bringing one up to show the hardship.
I talked to a lot of people in this community.
Bringing one up to show a hardship.
And a lot of people come to me and talk to me about stuff, and I don't know why, but, you know, I was just, you know, wanted you to see it from another perspective and whatnot.
There was one other thing that you said that I want to make sure is clear to you and to others. There is an outside entity that sources, that audits the water department. All the dollars they receive by account and all the money that they spend by account every year, okay? An outside entity, a CPA-driven auditing firm. So, that outside investigation occurs. We pay for it, and it occurs annually. So, I want to clarify that, too.
Okay. Okay, now...
They don't make sure the bill is correct, though.
No, I didn't say, I didn't say that.
And I'm just clarifying as well.
Yeah, but no, but Mr. Alexander, that's a very different thing. The allegations have to do with, where does the money go, and where does it come from, where does it go? That is absolutely audited by the accounting firm every year, not at a bill level, but at the money that comes into the accounts, and then the money that leaves the accounts is audited every year by an outside firm. So, okay.
Can I mention something real quickly? I'm not trying to take up anybody else's time, but on the ordinance earlier, there is a noise ordinance, it's 10:30 PM, having to do with, you know...
Now, this is where inexperience, this is where inexperience is getting you in a little trouble, okay? At this point, we only get to talk about this item, okay?
Ma'am, thank you very much for coming forward. I know that it took a lot of courage, and I appreciate your remarks. I'm not going to cross-examine you, and I thank you very much for coming forward and letting us know how you feel. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I want to add this. Why don't you get with this gentleman and the little lady in the little house that got their water cut off, share her name and address? Because I'd like to find out how that got cut. Somebody had to have called or something happened to trigger that cutoff. So, if you don't mind getting with Mr. Dixon, and I'd like him to get back with you.
I don't have her name.
You don't even know, okay? Do you know her address?
Contra Valley Council of Governments.
But you don't know her address?
She does, she helps with...
Do you want to come up?
Including elderly people.
Do you know her address, where she lives?
I'll have to get it up to the phone.
Okay.
I can probably find it.
Bill Richardson, morning. Oh, I'm freezing.
I'm sorry. A little closer, a little closer to the mic. Thanks so much.
I think there's some confusion. I know I was confused about the late fee because I considered that there was no, I guess, what do you call it, allowance after the due date, and I think the public is confused about that.
Grace period.
Yeah, grace period, yeah. And I support the percentage fee, and writing a hot check is illegal. I know, I know. Okay. And I'd like to ask Mr. Dixon if they're still looking into combating the invasive species that are around our lakes and our reservoirs.
Okay, hang on a second. Again, delinquent water utility statements is the item at hand, so we're going to have a chance for future agenda items, and let's talk about the endangered species when we talk about another item, okay?
Okay, but I thought you did mention current water supply.
No, that was a previous item. I've moved us to item number 19. That was a different item. We've closed that item out, we've moved to another item. So, I'm just, again, trying to keep you on topic. But you're going to have an opportunity. I know you'll be here. There's going to be a future agenda item section, and at that point, I'm very much interested in you bringing up to us and telling us, let's go through the endangered species stuff at the lake.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, just simply saying that right now, we're not allowed to talk about that. Let's move to, you know, this is just about delinquent water utility statements.
Okay. I'll just repeat that. I think there's confusion about the late fee and when it's due, and that there is actually no grace period after the due date. I think that's confusing people. I know it confused me because one time, I forgot, and I went in and paid two days late, and they didn't charge me the late fee at that time, but it was on my next bill.
Well, Mr. Richardson and Mr. Turner both have made comments that the guys that'll be working on this should take to heart so they can look at that. And thank you very much.
I'm pretty sure Mr. Dixon heard your question, so if you'll just turn around and visit with him before.
No, it's not, oh, thank you.
Not right now, not right now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Silvas.
All right. Outstanding. Anything else related to the delinquent water utility statements? All right, let me move us to item number 20. Update and presentation on boards and commissions regarding attendance, meeting quorum issues, related matters, and any action in connection thereto.
Mayor, I will be presenting this item. I do have the staff liaisons in case you have any questions in regards to a specific board. I did pull the attendance reports for all the boards and commissions. What I did note, that we did have some cancellations due to lack of agenda items. Some of them were because of a quorum, and normally, depending on the items at hand, the board liaison would reschedule that meeting probably within the next week. I did, in looking at this information, because of the cancellations, it may not be through what we control, for example, Construction Board of Appeals. That board may be canceled because maybe they don't have the items or they're working with another entity in order to get that information. So, we have a period that they missed, I think, five meetings, you know, in 2012. So, with that said, we may even consider looking at these scheduled meetings. Normally, it's held once a month, but if we're canceling as many meetings as we have, we may be, look at possibly having them every quarter or twice a year, or just have it called as opposed to a scheduled set meeting once per month.
Okay. If someone misses a quorum now and again, that's probably life, vacations or whatever. If someone misses one, one of the things that might be looked at on scheduling of the dates is how that impacts the affected entity's ability to get on this agenda. So, one thing you might somehow look at is, what day of the month or what time of the month are these meetings being scheduled? And see if there's such thing, in other words, for instance, this month, we meet on the 2nd and we meet on the 16th, and it's only a 30-day month. We meet again on the 2nd of May or 3rd of May, somewhere in there. But what I was looking for is whether or not it delays a process. Even if they reschedule seven to 10 days later, if all of a sudden, they've missed the ability to be posted, it has actually delayed them a month. Did that make sense to you?
Yes, yes.
Okay? Because they didn't get here on an agenda, and then two weeks later, they were on an agenda? So, the person that's trying to move a project forward is delayed, not just that extra week for the, you know, for the meeting to take place, they're delayed for a month to get on another council agenda. So, that's where I'm wanting you to see if there's anything there to be thought of. I don't really know. And then, but you didn't see, another follow-up question, you didn't see, you know, any given group that's having trouble repeatedly getting a quorum or anything like that?
I did have one board in particular, but it was mainly because they had a, kind of like a turnover in their board members. Maybe somebody moved away, that appointment was not reappointed, or the, you know, I work closely with councils as far as the board appointments. If I don't have applications to present to council, and that's where I'm having difficulty, and I'm working very closely with our Public Information Officer about recruiting volunteers to serve on these boards.
Yes.
I've been on KLSD. I have an article here pretty soon. That's where I'm at at this point, recruitment. You know, I'm having difficulty recruiting individuals to serve on these boards.
Okay. But so, not a, if there's trouble with a quorum, there's some extenuating circumstance, you're not finding a seven-member board, you know, that's not meeting or having trouble getting quorums, or you're not finding that.
And like I do have, and it's mainly only because either that person has moved away, and it just happens, so happens within a month.
I'm not asking my question well. It may be a seven-member board, but because of people moving or different things, there are only five on it, it would be a problem. I'm saying, if there's a seven-member board and there are seven members, you're not having, you're not seeing a group like that missing quorums.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Others that have questions on this?
Yeah, I think the key is that we want to make sure that, like Alvin said it right, we want to make sure that the committees can be doing the business that they're supposed to be doing, and if it's a citizens or a business or whatever it is, that they can get the action that they need and not get held up by, you know, time, because time is huge. So, we need to see what we can get done with that and make sure that it's not a problem. So, I'm good.
Okay, others? Mr. Alexander?
Yes, since, since I've been a part of this council, I have agreed with Mr. Turner that we need board and commission reviews, that they, they should be here maybe once every two years to where we can exchange thoughts, look at their mission, their vision. Are they on the same page as us? What, what role do they play? Uh, what, what problems are they running into? Just an overview. If they said, hey, we need this tool, then we can maybe change the policies to give them a tool they need. We don't ever meet, we don't ever talk and lack of communication. Uh, I'm trying to think of a time when it's a good thing. If we were enemies, it might be a good thing, but we're not. We're working together, we're in the same boat.
This is regarding attendance, meeting, quorum issues.
But they may come to us and say something about that and give us the information. Because we don't have these other meetings, we don't know.
There you go.
So there you go. I plug it right in.
Need you to be on top.
But it's how I feel.
All right.
We've kind of ignored that subject.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Outstanding, thank you. Okay, any other comment from council? Public input?
Yes, Jim Turner again, who tried to get the board and commission review process going four years ago. And one of the problems you have with a quorum is you have so many different boards and commissions out there and so few people to fill those. We have to be careful. There are some that are required by statute out in law outside and that we have to work with. But we still have never gone through the process of making sure that we have the number we need and not a lot of excess. We're not very good at boards and commissions and that causes an attendance problem, especially when we also have limits on the fact that people can only serve on one, maybe two boards. Some boards, that's the only board they can serve on. And that cuts down the pool of available people, not only that are willing, but actually have the time, resources and everything else. Cause it takes a lot to be on one of these boards and commissions. If we're having problems with council or with quarums and with agendas and having some things for them to do when they show up, we really need to go back in that process. And some of those need to be combined or eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Sure, please.
Starting in 2008, staff did review the various boards and commissions and we've combined and consolidated several boards. So now we have like 17 boards that we actually oversee, other than the external boards that we do have.
Right, I mean, most recently was the River Corridor Historic Commission Boards combination. Okay, any, is there any other public input on the item? Okay, this is just an update, so there is no other action to be taken at this time. Uh, Mr. Palensuela, do you have items that we need to go to executive session on?
Okay, so folks, at this time, I'm going to take us into executive session and we will come back after that. And at that point, talk about these board nominations and future agenda items.
Hang on, Dwayne, Dwayne.
You know, gotta have a quorum while I read this, okay? Okay. At this point, we move into executive session under the provision of the Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to the Requirement That Meetings Be Open, Section 551.072, To Consider The Purchase, Exchange, Lease Or Value Of Real Property, And Also Under Item 551.087, To Discuss And Offer A Financial Or Other Incentive To A Company Or Companies With Whom The City Of San Angelo Is Conducting Economic Development Negotiations. It is currently 1017. It's 11:39. I'll call a meeting back to order and take us out of executive session and back into regular session. And we will handle follow-up and administrative issues. There is no item to be handled from the executive session at this time. So item number 22 is the consideration of approving board nominations. We have a Civic Events Board nominee from Single Member District Five, Estela Salas. And a consideration of Civil Service Commission nominee, oh, no. Sorry, you guys, I can't mix two items. This is not A and B. We have one. Can I get a motion related to that or some concerns expressed?
I'll make a motion for approval.
It's our second.
Okay, I got a motion from Silvas, a second from Hirschfeld on Estela Salas. Please call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number 23, consideration of Civil Service Commission nomination. Raul Lopez by the city manager and approved by the city council.
Motion to approve.
Approval by the city council. Motion for Mr. Hirschfeld to approve, second by Mr. Silvas. Any further discussion? Okay, call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's time for announcements and consideration of future agenda items. Mr. Silvas, did, some of the ones you talked about earlier, do you want to?
Yes. The Avenue B and Irving Street project, you know, what they're doing out there. And, and I guess I bring that up and I'm glad the gentleman brought to my attention. I have driven by there. But if we could get in the, in the process or in the routine of maybe covering some of that up because it is, it is kind of rough on stuff like that, that can lead you all over. The noise ordinance, I'd like to revisit that to make sure that we're following. Because I've, I've experienced a lot of what this lady had mentioned, where vehicles driving around and they've got their music blaring and, and then the, the third one, Mayor, like I said, just, just a follow-up update on what's happening with the Medham and, you know, anything thereof. So that's all I have.
Okay, others?
Uh, I might need to say that the next council meeting is on May the 7th and I will not be in attendance.
May the?
Seven.
Seven? Okay, May the 7th.
I won't be in attendance either, so.
I don't, I don't like the odds on that. What do y'all want to do?
Just for that, I won't be either. Georgia.
So do you want to move this back a week and then move the other one back a week? Or what do you guys propose to do?
Two weeks from now is April 30th. Two weeks from then is the 14th, so it's, it's what? I mean, we can do April 30th.
April 30th? Would that work for?
Any issues there, ladies?
Yeah, I'm fine.
I may have an issue with a planning case. They do have one on the agenda.
Okay.
And that requires a public hearing and they have a public notice that stated. But, um, that is the only thing that I can think of, Ms. Mullin.
What about canvassing election results?
That's going to be the 21st.
I think they talked about moving that one also.
No, just a sec.
And that can be a special meeting. I don't necessarily have to have that as a regular meeting. I just have to have it within a designated time.
The second meeting doesn't have to move anyway. It could stay just where it is, but it's just suggesting maybe this first one actually.
I know, I wasn't, I'm sorry. I did cause muddied water there when I said, I said, maybe if you move one back, you move the other one too. But it was maybe, but that's where you got that. Do you want to go with the 30th and then go again on the 21st or whatever?
If, if Charlotte's going to be here on the 7th and Kendall's not, we've got the same thing then we have today. So I don't see any reason to change it.
Well, except we also don't have a city manager.
You have an assistant.
I know.
I don't see any reason to change it.
Okay, groups, groups desire, April 30th?
Two weeks from now. It's a good pattern.
I'm good with that.
April 30th, April 30th.
I'm game.
Uh, and if we don't do that, I mean, it's May 7th, I, April 30th.
April, it's April 30th. There's four out of, four people are saying, let's go April 30th so we have more people.
It is two weeks, it is two weeks from now. We had a, the three week.
Are there postings that have already gone out for planning?
That's what I was saying. I need to check with AJ on that one posting. Um, I'm not sure if she's already sent it out to be published. It may be a little early, but I'll, I'll need to double check with her.
And will she be able to get those on for, is it?
Not for the, more than likely not for the 30th.
It will end up postponing those cases.
Right, that will probably have to be postponed. And it's just one case.
Go with the, play with the April 30th, see if that works. If not, we'll just stick to the regular May 7th. Again, we would just be minus Kendall, actually.
Are we in agreement?
On which?
If I cannot make it for the, get everything resolved for the April 30th date, just leave it as is for May 7th.
What is that issue? What, what is that issue on this?
She has a planning case. It's a zoning ordinance, PD 1302. I just need to check with her because she has notification requirements.
I don't, okay, I don't want to have one on the 7th. So I mean, I'm not going to be here. If, if, it's going to be April 30th or May 14th. So if we're going to make a quorum, so let's do the 30th if it can happen and the 14th if it can't. Uh, I don't want any more pre-election council meetings myself. I wish we weren't having one on the 30th, so.
So the 30th and May 14th, and then of course, the canvassing will occur on the 21st with a regular meeting.
Yes.
Okay?
Anything else for future agenda items, announcements?
I, I have one and I don't know how this is going to turn out or whatever, but, uh, and this is something that, I guess it's been about six months ago, we created the Design Historic Review Commission, dissolving the Historic Review Commission and the River Corridor Commission into one. I think that was a solid move, a good move, but we expanded the district and created, I believe we created problem for businesses that, we spread problems, created problems and more regulation for businesses that didn't need to happen.
We need to, we need to dissect.
We need to dissect that of where the River Corridor should be. And maybe it's a redefinition of some of those, so do you understand what I'm asking for?
Well, so you would be looking at maybe the, when that group gets together and they're talking about a historic commission issue, it's this, this boundary. When they're talking about something related to the river, it's not the same boundary necessarily. Because the historic area is much larger than the River Corridor. And all of a sudden, we're acting like the River Corridor needs to be making, taking action on things you can't see from the river or that kind of thing. So we're saying, maybe we ought to be dissecting the boundary and saying, if it's a historic commission issue, it's this big. If it's a River Corridor issue, it's, the boundary is this big, so.
I, I think in addition to that, we probably need to look and see what changes are causing issues at this point, so.
And you know what those changes are, so you can be looking at that.
What kind of timeframe are you thinking? Just at the next meeting or as soon as we can work it up or?
Well, so because it's causing some issues, ideally sooner is better than, you know?
All right. This is creating problems for us, a fair number of really small businesses.
I agree. I've had a couple of those phone calls. They are having difficulty with the current situation.
And these are small, two-person, one-person, five-person businesses and that's not right.
Okay, other future agenda items or announcements?
Mayor, I believe.
Come on up.
You patiently waited.
I'm going to be brief, okay? I'm trying to learn. Um, I'm, I'm a citizen of San Angelo, Jamie Lee Tabor. And I'm in favor of you considering building a new police station. I'm just going to tell you what I've done. I'm trying to be quick. Uh, I've already called a guy named Steve in mapping at the tax appraisal office. I've already talked to Roseanne, Roxanne, excuse me, in zoning and about a property that has been vacant for years. And it is zoned as heavy commercial. So, you know, if that's a good location, I've already talked to Tim Vasquez. I've actually been in contact with him about coming and talking about this. And so I just want to let you know what I've done so far. And I've been in a lot of prayer over, you know, for quite some time about the.
What's the property?
Huh?
What property is it?
Um, okay. Uh, you're going down Houston, I mean, Arden Road.
Okay.
Out a ways, you know, and the new overpass of Houston Heart. Some people say it's Loop 306, you know? Do you know where Jim Bass North is across the ways? Okay, back across this way is that empty lot. Now, the first, or the part closer to where Circuit City used to be, you know, and all that, that's by private investors, so we can't touch that. But the part all the way up to the corner of Arden Road, you know, where it kind of turns like that, that is available for a new police station.
And are you in favor of a ground up as opposed to like renovating Albertson's or renovating Kmart?
Hmm, I didn't think about that. That's a good idea. Uh, what Tim Vasquez and I had been talking about and everything and, and that I've been in, you know, prayer about is if we, I mean, that's a great idea. I didn't even think about that, you know? I thought about another building and whatnot, but, uh, you, you know, we need to consider, uh, you know, um, oh, let me see, where I leave my train of thought.
I'm sorry for, I'm just trying to make sure I know what you're advocating for and if you would,
yeah, yeah, that's, that's a.
If you would support one of those other things.
Yeah, I would. If, if it's, um, here's how I think, okay? You have to consider, there's 165 officers in the police station. And there's single officers, there's divorced officers, there's officers that have spouses in the military. Um, there's officers who have families, you know, and, and et cetera. And you need to consider the location where it's going to be, um, oh, I don't know if I might have the right word, darn it. Where it's going to be good for an officer to go in and come out in a fast emergency. Also, you need to consider if the spouse is home, you know, while the officer's working and, and a child got sick and they have to rush the child to the emergency room. Can that officer, if he can't leave his shift, can he at least call his wife to see how the child's doing? But, you know, where he can maybe go close proximity to Shannon or out to community. Consider, you know, um, just keep in mind, try and consider a place located where it's closer to a hospital, convenience store, a restaurant, you know, like a little community kind of thing. So the officers won't be flat out somewhere where there's nothing in case of an emergency, you know, where they've got to go pick up something, they've only got 15 minutes to eat, you know, something quick and convenient, you know? There's Walmart, Supercenter, run and get a deli sandwich, some chips and a drink and, and leave again. Or where there's a Stripes convenience store where they have, you know, different things like that for an officer to go in really quickly and come back out and, and continue on their shift and that sort of thing. I just, I just really would like y'all to consider that, you know, to keep that in mind and everything. And I'm a calling person. Give me a telephone and a phone book and I can find out anything for you in 15 minutes, just about. But, uh, but, uh, and because of transportation for me is on foot, I walk everywhere. And so I see, you know, where and whatnot might not be a good place. But I'm willing to, you know, I'll talk to Tim some more. And I know he has some locations also. Him and some other officers have gone out and been in consideration where they would like something. But if, you know, if the city can't do a whole new police department, consider in the 76901 zip code, since we have this station downtown, to put a substation and then possibly another substation in the 76904 zip code. Because the downtown area is considered, you know, downtown Goodfellow and out where I live, I live in Dunbar Apartments. But that's Arlington, Texas and Grand Prairie. And when you get out to HEB and Arden Road, there's Dallas, Texas. You know, it's expanded hugely and it continues to grow out that way. And for an officer, when I lived at another apartment complex off Arden Road and there was a major emergency, so maybe beating the crap out of somebody, you know, and I have to call and I'm scared to death, it took them 37 minutes just to come to that phone call. And by that time, everybody has quit, you know, beating the crap out of each other and you're scared to death still, you know, and you've got to talk to the officer and whatnot. Just consider those things when looking at the location and where. Because if you have something else over in the one area or the 76904 area and something, you know, still this one downtown, just consider, it takes them a while, you know? And it takes them a while even to answer a 911 call when you're scared to death. I mean, I've had experiences where somebody's a lunatic and he's chasing me down the street and I'm trying to figure out how to, you know, cross the street before, and I don't want him touching me, you know? And it, for me, it, it takes extreme courage just to call 911 because I'm not used to doing that. I'm used to just toughening it out and, you know, and then going on. And so it, you know, it takes them 20 minutes sometimes even to just come to your aid and whatnot. But, um, I just, uh, I'm for looking at another building that's already in existence. I've actually thought of something. Just also keep in mind where they're at right now downtown. Um, they're having to take up Lowe's parking space. Half of their groceries are. up Lowe's parking space, half of their grocery store on the whole, half of that other side. I can't tell you west norther, you know, but just keep that in mind. Plenty of parking, and plenty of time for them to exit and enter in, you know, to drop off a report, or, you know, that sort of thing. And I thank you so much for letting me speak on behalf of the police department.
Okay, outstanding. You did a good job. Other public comment, or a question on it? Come on up. Announcements and future agenda items?
Bill Richardson. I, I think the sign ordinance has to be revised, especially for the businesses along the Houston Heart and the Loop. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Others for future items and, future, future agendas and announcements? Anything else? Any others from council?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Outstanding. Let's call for that vote. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.